UbaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Thank you. Public comment, Andy.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda and is within the board's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference to ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the fourth chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names supporting them. To ensure proper contact, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any members of the public violating generally accepted principles in a forum of official public meetings. Do we have any in-person public comments today? No, and let me check online. No.
All right. Before I move on, I want to remind everybody to shut your cell phones off for my silence. Okay, consent items. Any public comment on the consent items?
None.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for considering this and thank you for the agency for offering this up to the dump truck back to PBID. We're a very small fleet. It stays in compliance for us for far until 2035 and so it's very much appreciated and will be put in use. This is a thank you.
Great. We can help. Okay, any other public comment? And is there a motion?
Motion, second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, discussion items. Received presentation from North Yuba Water District regarding multiple Yuba Water grant program and funding projects. How?
So I'm just here to introduce Leona. We've been doing lots of work in endurance for North Yuba over the last few years. So they're here today to present on all the great work they've done up there and where our grant funding has been going and a lot of good work that we've done and a lot of more good work to do and I'll turn it over to Leona.
So this is the district. Just kind of wanted to give you an overview of some of the much-needed and very successful projects that we've completed with your help or because of your help in the last about two and a half years. Three and a half years. Two and a half.
Two and a half.
We've been, you guys, thank you. We've been very busy. So sorry. So, that's okay. This was a project that was funded through DWR and Yuba Water and then we put in some to the storage tank and then the Help for South Flume was you canal stabilization is both of us, the two different phases. Storage tank security and then the Forbes Town Ditch Planning Grant Phase One, which will be part of the engineering. So that is the old Redwood 100,000 gallon storage tank. No longer there. We also did a liner on two of our other bolted steel tanks that were bought used in the 60s and put in. They had anywhere between 50 and 100 holes each. So, much needed. This was one that was funded through DWR and Yuba Water.
All right.
The challenge tank obviously is in challenge and then there was the Forbes Town tank and the Rackerby tank. All three of them were 100,000 gallons. But that's the beginning of the new bolted tank that replaced the Redwood tank.
Sorry. I missed it. One second.
Well, I were waiting. I just like to add a couple of comments. For any of you guys that didn't go up and look at those tanks, those old wooden tanks? There was actually water spraying out of them in places, so they were way overdue for replacement.
Yes, they were.
There was like a little creek running down.
Okay. Next. I'm not sure what's going on. Sorry, guys. We're just trying to bear through the sounds right here.
Wow.
So that's the next phase when they started putting bunch of walls?
Let's try harder.
Next, sorry.
So there's some of the holes in the next that were lined, so. And that's just one little panel, so can imagine how many more there were. Wow. And there's the lining. Once it was in. This was the Help for South Flume. It was originally constructed back in the 1800s. They passed it to put up their boards and they have did little repairs on it, but it was when the engineers went out, they considered it ready for imminent failure. It was 230 feet long, 40 feet high. It has now been replaced with this inverted siphon. That was, or is part of the Forbes Town ditch.
And that one as well. Now they take a shower under that creek.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Feeling water.
And when you walked across it, you could feel it move. It was interesting as one way of it. You can see the broken boards and it was. Actually, that was the one thing that kept the field staff up at night in the winter. I had one during this winter of 2022, 23, we had a big snow and we weren't getting water down the ditch and they thought for sure that fell down, so they had the snowshoe up to it. Took them all day. And that supplies all of our domestic water. It also supplies our irrigation in the summer towards the end. That was the final phase. That's the head wall.
All right.
Oh, you're good. That was actually completed in April of 2024. So the Canal Stabilization and Water Loss Irrigation Project. To date, we have completed 15% of the Forbes Town ditch. And off the top of my head, I don't know the exact percentage of the lower ditch, but we can now actually deliver a full irrigation season off of just the Forbes Town ditch without having to rely on anything else in dry years. So it makes a big difference. That was the plastic that they were using before trying to stop the fish. In some spots, it was up to 80% loss. We are now at approximately 20% loss rather than 40, so it saved us 50% of our water. Dobbin's Organ House Canal is 22 miles long. It was at 65% water loss back in the beginning of 2023. So far, we have done five miles. Our water losses there have been reduced down to 30%. We are now on our third full year of irrigation, which is completed. So that's, that's very good. Our customers are happy, staff's happy. It's wonderful. We thank you guys. The security fencing. So we had all these tanks sitting up in the middle of the forest and I have always wondered why there wasn't even a fence around them since they had all of our domestic water. You guys helped on the fencing, which will keep our, our water in our tanks more secure. Big, big difference. So Phase One of the Forbes Town Ditch, planning grant. They're actually out there this week and last week surveying the ditch, the bottoms and stuff so that they can figure out the best way to permanently carry all of our water that we're going to need for now and in the future. Forbes Town Ditch is the most important part of our infrastructure because it carries all of our water, the domestic and irrigation when we need it. And without that, we'd have to deliver domestic water to the people that depend on us. And it was built in 1860 originally for the miners. So it is very old and needs a lot of upkeep. And when this is done, we're hoping to be able to, we're going to carry or increase it from 22 CFS, which is what it is now, to 38 so that we can build out for the rest of our customers in our district. You guys have contributed $4.6 million. The district thanks you very, very much because without that, none of this would have been possible. The tanks, Department of Water Resources, that grant was for 692, some change. And then we have also contributed what we can, so 567,000 per year. So the board, the staff, and the customers, constituents of North Yuba Water District, thanks you all very, very much for your continued support and help and everything that you do for us.
Thank you very much. It's quite a weird project.
Yeah.
It's amazing what can be done when you get off your chair.
I know, right? We've been busy and we thank you guys and we enjoy being able to let the customers depend on us to deliver their water and not have to worry about it.
Amazing, but you've done really good years. How long were they in it for?
Pardon me?
How long was the last bandage with there? What years?
I Yeah, 12 years something. I don't know. Wow.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to share with you guys.
We do have a public comment.
All right, we have a one public comment.
Anthony? You're, you can unmute now.
Hello? Anthony, can you hear us? Well.
We're not able to hear you, Anthony.
So far. Can you ask one of our staff members to come just to check?
Uh, Creighton? Can you talk? Oh, uh. Sorry, Creighton. Are you listening?
Joanna's going to talk.
Joanna, thank you. Joanna, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Excellent. Thank you, Joanna. There you go. You can ask Anthony to type the question or whatever.
Um, I think he was, yeah, Chris is already on.
Okay.
All right. Any comments on the directors?
Yeah, this looks like you've done a lot to reduce losses already, which you're never going to completely eliminate losses. But that's kind of the focus going forward too is keep cutting down the losses of the system.
Yes.
And one other comment that one picture reminded you of there is I would suggest in the next grant, second 2x12, walk on top. I'm just saying that just from experience.
So can I make a comment?
Yeah.
So it's been wonderful working with Leona the past two and a half years. She's come to the agency not only for fund grant funding, but also for just advice on how to manage through these big projects. She's done a wonderful job, you know, getting these projects implemented, just like us with our big tunnel outages going on. For example, the Help for South Flume is a big project for North Yuba Water District and get that done as quickly as possible and capture that efficiency and the safety of that canal system is wonderful. I'll just remind everyone that the Agency Act of 1959 allows us to invest in water supply development for the benefit of Yuba County and the North Yuba Water District customers are water district customers in Yuba County. And just like we help with levees in Marysville in the south part of the county or other water supply stuff or even just like donating a dump truck to Brownsville Irrigation District. Our investments, and you saw, you know, over $4 million of investments in this benefits the people of Yuba County. It is authorized by this board and through the Agency Act. So I think it's just a wonderful partnership we've developed with North Yuba over the last two and a half years and Leona, let's keep it happening.
Thank you.
Yeah, so many things.
I have something to comment just to finish it off. Just North Yuba, the whole group's been one worker on our supply and grant program. And I just want to highlight one, one thing Leona said, they delivered water now three years in a row.
Yes.
How many years before that did you not deliver?
Yeah, like five out of 10, we did deliver water. So 50% of the time, we did not deliver irrigation water.
So I just wanted to highlight that in the last thing. Yeah, I delivered three, but that wasn't, that's not normal in all this work as much as we have. And we continue to work together and we'll get more done. Thank you guys.
One comment?
Yep.
One other aspect of, of the work that the water agency has allowed North Yuba to do is that we are still, we're, we're still with pending applications for extension before a state board and a concern of a state board, as it should be, was reasonable use. So those, those loss numbers was a, was a high priority. And in this, on a sec, on a second note is North Yuba has been, has been dealing with a forfeiture claim of our neighbor agency, South Fed Water and Power. It's just been filed and anything that shows to the state board that we have not only reduced losses already, but we've done a kick-ass amount of tough of work in a short time. And we are not only, we are not only hoping to for the, for the future and the next part of our community, we're doing. So all those things, thanks to you, we have a much better position in the, in the, in a little bit of a, of a rocky period.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Sure.
Yeah.
I just, I like that you have projected growth on water delivery up there because that's a super important wall of states living. How, how they can get more water south and into the Delta. We're looking at how we can help develop our county and support our farmers. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I'd like to also comment that in the long term, saying you had a place for a small dam and below a challenge. And I think you should still, oh, review that project, see if we can make it feasible.
I'd love to do that. Yeah. The only other comment I wanted to add too is just the importance of them delivering the irrigation water because really three years ago, people were watering their animals and stuff with their domestic well, well, but running dry in the organ house. And I, you know, it was just a recharge with the groundwater and everything else because people are now using their well water just for their homes and not having to use them to air, try to irrigate their pastures and send water to their animals. Just that, that's another important thing about them expanding, the more they can expand, the better the ability of the little community up there. So thank you for the presentation, Leona. It was fun.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Bye. And for received presentation in progress of the tunnel outage contract, Carl from Casey.
Appreciate you guys giving us this opportunity to give you a brief update of current status of the tunnel project. Carl Parker, Operations Manager.
I'm Case Peterson, Hydro Engineer, giving the tunnel project along with Ben Deal as well.
So the, the start of the outage really began with us locking out the valves at the dam itself and then draining the tunnel. And that was a multi-day process. Operations team worked around the clock to slowly drain the tunnel. And that's important to protect entirety of the tunnel as the pressure. A picture you have here on the left is the water treatment facility that the contractor has set up just below that last turn as you go down to Colgate Powerhouse. And that is processing all the water that is coming out of the tunnel now. So there's still water seeping out of the rock into the tunnel. It's referred to as nuisance water at this point and that is being diverted down into this water treatment facility, adjusted for pH and turbidity and then discharged. What would turn volume? About 1,800 gallons per minute. And the image there on the right is just a picture of the, the pin stock right at the top of the hill and with the water flow prior to them damming it out and converting it to the water treatments.
So we completed a liner inspection. There's liners on either side of the tunnel. So we completed the inspection for both the upstream and the downstream ends. The upstream end is the original coal tar epoxy. So you can see in that far left picture, there are some areas where a secondary layer of that coal tar epoxy is exposed. We didn't see any actual exposed steel, so that's good. We're waiting for the report back from our coding consultants to see exactly what the extent of those repairs will be. On the downstream side, it looks like they completed or they breathed in that lining in 2008 during that tunnel outage. So that's a, a better coating and it looks in really good condition. So those will likely have a couple of spot repairs, but that should be about it. Go to the next slide. And then Ben, you want to answer that C P S B?
Oh, you guys are good.
And over at the C P S B, so one of the steps, we're replacing a section of pin stock. So the picture on the left is them doing that cutting process to remove that section of pin stock. And then on the right, that's just an exterior shot of that, that cut there. And they successfully transported the old pin stock section up the hill. This was one of the kind of scary parts of the project. You can see that the right side picture, those power poles are fairly close together. So we knew there was enough room, but just barely. And they were able to thread the needle and get it through there and we successfully got it out. Now it's over at staging area until we're complete with the project, then we'll get it disposed of. Uh, this is the work going on currently at the CPSB. We are in the process of digging the foundation for the new thrust block. That's been going very well. Just steady progress is being made. We have geologists out there while they're excavating throughout the whole process to take a look at the rock and make sure that it'll be good for the design. And so far, things are looking good. For the tunnel access prep side of things, so on the left picture, that's the, the top of our surge shaft and they're utilizing that as one of the entry points for the tunnel. And so that, that pink man cage they're utilizing for personnel and they're also utilizing the crane to bring down materials, some smaller equipment, and then they're also bringing up some of the tunnel muck out of the surge chamber since one of their disposal sites is next to the surge chamber. That middle picture is the cover that they have. It's now installed on top of the surge chamber. So those two holes are for the ventilation fans to make sure there's adequate ventilation for personnel safety inside of the tunnel. And then the middle there, there's a door. And so there's two doors that are hydraulically driven for it to open up whenever either personnel or materials or equipment or the muck has to go in or out of the surge chamber. And then for the majority of time, it'll just stay closed so that the ventilation is able to do its job. And the top right picture is the upper pin stock section. So this is up at the dam. They shimmyed over a, a section of pin stock and that's another point of entry into the tunnel. Right now, they're in the process. You can kind of see in the back, there's a pile of aggregate. So they're taking that rock and constructing a ramp that'll go up into the pin stock for easy access into the tunnel. And you can see the, the boom from the crane there too. And so they'll have to pick equipment up onto this ledge because there's no way to drag equipment up onto it. Uh, we also completed a rock trap inspection. The rock trap, it's actually in very good condition. We were pleasantly surprised by that. And then the amount of it being filled, so there's 12 total bays and the last two bays were almost completely empty. But the rest were significantly full. So it was definitely a good time for us to pull the trigger and do the outage and get that material out of there. And right now, the Drill Tech Obyashi team, they're working on chipping away at this material and bringing it up the surge shaft.
How much rock this time against the last time?
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not sure about the quantity last time. This time we had projected about 3,500 cubic yards. I'll have to, to check with what we're visually seeing in there and how close that matches up to our estimate. But I'm not sure how much was in there during the 1974 is the last time they cleaned it out. So it should have been pretty minimal material in there in 74.
3,400 seems like quite a bit.
Yeah, it's a big tunnel, but yeah, it's definitely a lot of material, but luckily we still have those two bays open. So we had some extra space for some more material too.
And you used your robot to look inside for the tunnel for more?
Yeah, this was one of the things that it was, it was really hard to quantify, even that 3,500 was a very big guess because the sonar, it can't see through that decking. So we were only able to see these little exposed areas where there's the rebar, the open slot. So we kind of had to guess where the sediment was going underneath the decking. So the, the ROV gave us kind of an idea, but definitely wasn't many exact numbers.
Now may the time do us also some way of doing it?
For the inspection?
Yeah.
Uh, we can look into that and see if there's any creative ideas where we could get a look under that decking. I'll think about that a little bit more. Uh we can look into that and see if there's any creative ideas um where we could get a look under that decking. I'll think about that a little bit more.
Can you see, what is that pipe over there in the bottom right?
Yeah, so that is a twelve inch line. Um it's for depressurizing the walls of the surge chamber. So it starts, there's a perforated pipes that go along behind the, the walls of the surge chamber. And then it goes to the tunnel and it daylights at the surge or at the um rock trap. And then it, it discharges over by the CPSB. Uh so they're actually using that for the seepage water. They have pumps that are tying into this piping system to get the seepage water out of there. That's how it's used part of our debarrier process.
So that's not in there when we're running? That's just you?
Oh, it is.
Oh, it's in there all the time?
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a permanent feature of the tunnel.
Okay.
Cause the purpose of the rock trap? Because of, so say the generator?
Exactly, yep. Yeah, yeah. And for reference for where it's located, there's the, the surge chamber, the rock trap. And then immediately after the rock trap is the steel line section before the pin stock gets exposed. So it's at the very end of the tunnel, just capturing any debris to make sure it doesn't get to the needles. Is that right?
Now, what type of thing?
Oh, that's it. A hundred and twenty feet?
A rock rock?
Yeah.
Three hundred foot.
Three hundred feet.
Do, are we, do we sell the rock that comes out of there? So they might want to go through holes.
We would love to. You probably could sell it. You could probably sell it. We tried. And while all that work's been going on inside the tunnel, the, the plant uh has been doing a lot of maintenance, we're taking advantage of the outage. But we have just a few pictures of, of one of the major projects there is the rework of the seats on the, the terminal stop valves. Um still a reasonable seats. And so this is the first opportunity we've had going uh to address these seats. And you can see the team there um working on removing these studs and bolts. Uh and then far left is just an internal image of the inside of the valve. They did some internal ass founds as well. Goodness, like. And this is more work uh involved with that. You have them welding on uh these chunks of steel. And then they use these hydraulic uh jacks, inter packs, uh to actually move a section of, of, of ring off of that pipe uh and separate it. Uh it was quite a bit of work for them to get that, to come separate it after all these years, but they're only getting done. Um next image. And that's a, a picture of that uh sliding ring that they rayed them to slide off to the side and then remove, allowing them to access the uh valve uh internals. And then there's a picture of a person standing next to a triple scale. And that's a picture of a rock trap back in nineteen seventy-four.
Yes, sir.
Kind of come full circle. Uh any questions or comments?
I just have something to add to your, uh kind of to Charlie's point. Is, is there some type of uh analytics or anything that we can install now that inside that you know, could kind of help us in the picture with knowing how old rock traps are, if there's any items inside them that are like rocks fall, giant rocks fall down or risks and stop moving.
We have thought about installing station markers or like little metal tags inside the tunnel. Um it's, it's a hard thing because you want something big enough you can identify it through an R O V, but not too big where it could potentially fall out over time and end up into the units. So it's kind of hard to find that balance. Uh we'll look into that a little bit more because I think that's kind of the only thing we can do to help that R O V inspection. Cause if the last two that we've done, we use the length of the tether to determine where we are inside the tunnel. But if there's actual stationing inside the tunnel that the R O V can see, that would help us just figure out exact positioning a little bit better. Um but the R O Vs are able to figure out quantities within the, the whole tunnel pretty well and identify voids or significant rock falls. The rock traps, but the hard one. Get a good look at it.
But I, I think the key there will be just to do those R O V inspections at that regular interval. And then we'll be able to see progression of these rock traps. It's taking fifty years to fill these traps. It's not something that's gonna happen immediately. And so we'll be able to track that, that change over time and probably be able to estimate, you know, how much time.
Well, that was my question. They haven't been playing since nineteen seventy-four?
Correct.
On other online tunnels, did they ever, any of them had major problems or failure or more or less falling out?
Yeah, the White Rock Tunnel is a very similar design and size to our tunnel. Um and they did a significant rehabilitation project, uh I think in twenty nineteen. And so there, I mean, they had a very different geology than our tunnel. Um and they did have to have significant amount of tunnel reinforcements with the rock bolts and the shock creek to what we're doing, but a much larger magnitude for how much they had to repair.
So how do you determine how firm the rock is?
Uh how firm the rock is? Um yeah, that's a good question. That's a good geology question. I think a lot of it depends on the type of rock edit it, that it is and just seeing the different patterns of the default zones and stuff like that.
So we will be going through and inspecting the entire tunnel, bringing in some uh geologists to help us determine just where we need to be reinforced.
If you have a seismic event, that would be something catastrophic as well.
Potentially. Yeah, luckily when it's filled, since it is pressurized, I think the seismic concern is a bit less. Uh that'd be more of a concern once in the unwatered state.
Well, there's more pressure on the cell, uh falling apart when there's no water.
Yeah.
The, the, the pressure from water actually stabilized.
And then the velocity, they say, I don't know, online tunneling don't want more than five feet per second or something.
Yeah, I believe ours is around somewhere around two feet per second in the line section.
And then the head loss, the, that determined by the size of the volume.
Yeah, I don't think we've specifically been uh looking at the, the head loss since we have the right flow rate to keep the generators running. Um it's kind of the, the natural beast of having an online tunnel.
Charlie, um one thing I've been told is, you know, we're talking about other uh projects that have you know, rock fall or significant voids in their tunnels when they go to inspect them. It's, what I've heard, it's because the soil type or the geology changes through the distance of the tunnel and there's softer rock versus harder rock and they see their problems where the rock is softer. The geology of our tunnel, we're, we're lucky. It's, it's pretty solid rock the whole way. We don't have significant changes in, in geology through the distance of four and a half miles. So um that's beneficial. Also, you asked about um, you know, flow rate or velocities. Um you, you saw the pictures there of the, the thousand foot line section on the top and bottom. So a thousand feet from the top and a thousand feet to the bottom is lined in fourteen diameter steel, fourteen foot diameter steel. Then it opens up into twenty-five foot wide by forty foot tall horseshoe tunnel. And that's where the water goes slowest. That's where it's at two feet per second. That's part of the design. The engineers of this project did a great job designing the the size of the tunnel such that the velocity is super slow through that online section. So we've got good geology, we've got good design, and I'll go back to the, the uh rock trap, you know, filling over fifty years. Fifty years of operation and I'll just call it normal, you know, power generation operation ramping during the peak hours of the day for fifty years. I mean, PG operated it for fifty years and we've been operating it for nine and a half in a similar manner. And we had, you know, I'm just gonna say eighty percent of the rock trap full in fifty years. It seems like that was a good design as well. And so yes, we'll continue to brainstorm on ways we can put markers in the tunnel and, you know, maybe even depth markers. We do have a weakness there. We don't want something coming, becoming detached and going through the generators. But um continuous, like Carl said, continuous inspection of the safe, uh these guys have figured it out, but every five years you run an R O V down through it and just inspect the whole tunnel and inspect the rock traps. I think we're set up for, you know, hopefully another fifty years of operation after we get this work all completed.
And I guess my question, you say it was eighty percent full?
That's my number. It's kind of a guess based on the base.
The, the thing concerned me, eighty percent when we leave twenty of that before the generator being impacted. And you can't really see through the rocks. So it seemed like it's kind of a lot of effort trying to find some way to put a camera or something in, in the rock trap. So you knew when it got out full.
Agreed. I mean, if, if there's technology we can install that we know is gonna be reliable, we would, we'll install it. I just don't know that that exists.
All right, I have a, I'm a few gentlemen.
First of all, just to, congratulations for getting it started after all the years of planning. It just looks from this report like it's doing really well. So do you feel you're on schedule and, and have you run across anything you weren't expecting?
Um so far, no. We do the, the full tunnel inspection. That's right now, it just been the week of Thanksgiving. So we'll, we'll know firmly how the, the tunnels at least look in then. Uh but I mean, so far, it seems like the tunnel's in pretty good condition. They at least did a, an informal walkthrough the other day. Um the Drill Tech team did and they, they reported back good things. There was a couple of areas where it sounded like there was some larger debris, but, but nothing significant, nothing of concern or, you know, super not expected. Um but yeah, things are smooth as a mouse. Just I feel hesitant saying that because I don't want to jinx myself.
Well, you've uh mentioned the, the minor concrete uh foundation piece that we had to work on.
Yeah, yeah. So there was a uh pin stock pier at the upstream section that we needed to, uh it's been part of this project since um a couple of years now. We had a contractor to go work on it, but they weren't comfortable performing the repair while the pin stock was watered up. So we took the opportunity to put it in the tunnel outage. Uh we started a demo work on that. Then we did notice that there were some cracking in the, so basically originally it wasn't embedded pin stock pier. And then in nineteen seventy-four, when they went in there to repair the, the rock fall, they basically chopped off that pier and made it um have feet on it. So that section of pin stock could be removable in the future. When we did that, they left the original concrete on the bottom, chopped off the top and then added some pretty low quality concrete on the very top of it. So it had a very insufficient cap on the top of that pier. So as we were demoing that material, we noticed that there were some cracking that did manage to propagate down into the original concrete. Um so we did have the contractor pause for a couple of days until we were able to get the structural engineer with the engineering of record team on site. Um and they came and took a look at it and they didn't have concerns about the cracks, but we made sure to just pause everything and make sure we had it thoroughly looked at before we proceeded with the, the repair job. So I don't know. Is there anything else you want to add about that?
No, I mean, it, and that, that delayed a couple of days. Uh but there is enough flow given the schedule that we're still on track.
Can you tell me more about, I'm concerned if the flow is only two feet per second and the rock trap is at the end of the tunnel. So you're telling me debris would be two or three miles away and would roll down in the top to the rock traps? That help? What is, what does the debris look like?
It uh, it varies from maybe like five inch rounds down to pretty small um pebbles. So it's, it's fairly small material that's rolled in there. And so over those fifty years, just slowly, even though it's, you know, relatively small velocity, I think just material slowly migrates that way and just kind of makes its way into the rock trap.
Is there, was there much brown rocks between the rock trap and the upper end?
Uh the rock traps, it, it runs up right to that steel line section. So there's no tunnel.
Was there debris in, in the tunnel that had to roll?
Yeah, so uh I have talked to myself. I don't know if Mike talked about the quantity of debris on the invert?
No, it's R O V stuff.
Yeah, yeah. And from the R O V, we anticipate about the same quantity along the invert as inside of the rock trap.
Oh, okay. So if you got eighteen hundred yards here, you got another eighteen hundred to add to it?
Uh like
What was that for?
About thirty-five hundred and then thirty thousand on the invert. But it'd be like sixty-five thousand cubic yards in total.
A substantial amount before the rock trap then. You said thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Before the rock trap and just hundreds in the rock trap.
No, it's about the same quantity in the rock trap and spread along the invert.
Yeah, probably does.
So you may be wondering, well, you know, Casey hasn't been in the tunnel yet, maybe Ben hasn't been in the tunnel yet. The critical path work is the, the valve stuff down at the downstream end of the tunnel. And uh every man hour that is time spent in the tunnel is accounted for ahead of time. So we have these guys going in the week of Thanksgiving, right?
Yep.
Uh we want to make sure we got enough work underway with that pin stock shut off valve and the, the foundation for that. In progress, we know that that's gonna be the geology for that foundation and all that. And these guys will get in with the engineering team and geologists, look at the tunnel. We have a repair plan, plan if needed. If there's any repairs needed, it sounds like they won't be needed because we've already did a, a team did a cursory review. Didn't see any major issues. But if there is any type of like bolting and lagging repairs, that's all pre-approved by FERC.
Yeah.
Just have anticipation of what may be needed at, at the time. But my, my point of bringing all this up is our team will get in there. The reason they, they haven't been in there is because of all the other critical path work that needs to be done before they get in there.
I, I think I just can't, the tunnel slopes down the hill.
Slightly.
So the rocks are rolling down the hill. That, now I can understand that two feet per second can move. I wasn't thinking very good.
Could, could you remind everybody how long the tunnel was?
Five miles.
Five miles. So would it be possible when I go for the tour to drive my bike and still walk? Any, any other questions? Anyone from the public? Any questions or comments? Andy, can you see if we have any answers in? Well, I guess we have no action. We're just presentation, huh?
I'd just like to volunteer my welding inspector services if you guys need somebody to.
Thank you. I know where you can grow rice in your town.
I just want to follow up to you. Thank you for the presentation and the update. It's mind-boggling. We see how big of everything. You know, I just finished harvest, so I'm planning about working on a shager with inch and a half or inches and you guys are doing it to my six inch inches. And the bolts are huge. Everything's just so big up there. Just I don't know how you're dealing with it, obviously yours.
We got a good team.
Yeah. Great job. All right. Thank you. Next one? For the next one, I did want to um reflect for the record that the record now is, is here.
Yes, and I have noted that we showed up at nine oh two.
Just roll call. Thank you. Okay. Um. Out of by received presentation about the twenty twenty-five screening and awareness survey results. Katie.
Good morning. I'm Katie Friedle, your communications manager. Um and as I mentioned during our flood risk workshop a couple of weeks ago, we did a survey over the summer to ask you the county residents, like, you know, so of, an awareness and perception about the agency. But we learned a lot of, of other things as well. Today, we're gonna focus on the results that we heard with regards to the perception of this agency and the quality of life in the county. Next slide. So uh every year, my team and I, we, we develop a strategic communication plan and this is really what it's all about. We, we exist to build awareness about the agency, to build and maintain a positive perception, to educate stakeholders and the public. And we use a lot of different means to get there, from our website and traditional media engagement to paid advertising, community events and more. And we have to measure that to know if we're meeting the mark. Are we actually succeeding and accomplishing what we're trying to do in, in trying to reach these goals? Um we measure that in a lot of different ways. Every month, I send you all the monthly report of our analytics of how we are on the web and social media and the number of, of releases we put out and things like that. Uh but every couple of years, we go out with a scientific research study to actually survey the public and find out, okay, how much do they know about us? Do they know we exist and what, what is their perception of it? Do they like us? Uh next slide, please. So this is the company True North Research that we've hired over the last few years to provide that survey for us. Next slide. Uh the objectives were to profile the awareness and perceptions of the agency, measure public knowledge of our activities and responsibilities, and uh identify, you know, where are people getting their information, which we talked about a few weeks ago. Um the methodology used was a just quick ten-minute online and telephone survey. They reached five hundred and seven adult residents. The survey was provided in both English and Spanish. It was executed the week of May first through the seventh. And it has a plus or minus four point three percent at eighty-five percent confidence level. Next slide. Next slide. So this is the fun stuff. Uh what we learned, we, we ask a question each year about the quality of life, how they feel their quality of life in Yuba County is. And we are very aware that we aren't the only thing that affects their quality of life. But we want to measure this over time to see, are these investments that we're making and this effort that we're putting forth, are, are we seeing that in partnership with everything else going on in the county? Are people starting to appreciate their quality of life more? And um it's hard to see for you guys because of the, where the banner is. There you go. Thanks, Mandy. Oh. No, okay, there we go. But anyway, uh so uh in twenty nineteen, uh you could see the numbers there on the far right, uh middle year twenty twenty-three, and then this most recent year, twenty twenty-five. The little cross symbol next to some of those numbers means there is a statistically significant difference. And so the wonderful thing you see there is that uh the quality of life is improving in Yuba County. People are noticing an improvement in their quality of life. Go back.
Sorry.
Thanks, Mandy. Um, and so we're seeing both, you know, good to excellent, improving, and uh those who, you know, they're moving out of the fair category. They're moving out of all the negative or numbers. So next slide, please. We also ask a kind of an open ended question, um just to see if anything that we can help with would show up in this particular answer as to what changes would they like to see to improve Yuba County. And I especially for those of you who are county supervisors, there's a lot of data here that you might find interesting. Um, we were looking specifically for things related to water, but there's a lot of other things there that you might find useful. Um, as you can see, you know, it it's a little ways down before it's like addressed water related issues is is an issue that we may or may not be able to help with. But you can kind of see some of the stuff. Improve infrastructure could be something that we can be helping with as well. So this is just good to know. Is there something that we're not really even aware of that we should be paying attention to?
Get rid of the P G T. Was there no was there no no response on there about uh let's see, traffic? Where's traffic? You're about there, though. Is there?
There's traffic.
Okay, okay. Sweet. Surprising it's so low.
So go ahead. So we start with the basics. Have you heard of us? And as you can see, uh for twenty twenty-five, there is a statistically significant improvement in the number of people who have heard of us. And uh and that's always good. We want people to hear about us, but that really doesn't hit the mark for us. We want them to understand us. So we dive a little bit deeper from there. Next slide, please. So then we ask, you know, okay, are you, how familiar would you say that you are with Yuba Water Agency? And our numbers there have also significantly improved. The people, the folks that are saying somewhat familiar or very familiar are getting better and better. And they're eating into the numbers that were saying they were not aware of us at all. And so it's definitely um we are becoming more familiar every day. Okay, next slide. The opinion of the agency is where it really starts getting more interesting. So you can see a statistically significant improvement in the number of people who say that they are, they have a very favorable opinion of us. Um, somewhat favorable is also improving significantly, and they're eating out of the people who say they really weren't sure. Um, so that is, we're all moving in the right direction, but the fact that there is fifteen point one somewhat unfavorable and five point nine percent very unfavorable, you know, that it's like, what is that? And so we're always like, well, what's causing that?
And are the chair, are you have questions that are going to help answer that?
Yes.
Because I can't imagine.
I know.
So next slide, please. So this this next slide is uh is really just at the far left is the slide you just saw with the overall numbers of opinion. This is it broken down by how familiar they are with us. And so as you can tell, the more familiar people are with Yuba Water Agency, the better their opinion of us are. They really do think, okay, we are amazing if if they are more educated about who we are and what we do. And the less familiar they are, the less that very favorable to somewhat favorable member is. But still, even in the very familiar and somewhat familiar, there are a lot of people in that somewhat unfavorable and very unfavorable category. And as someone who like we put our hearts and souls into trying to help people understand all the good we're doing in this community, it I take it personally, right? I'm like, I I'm immediately offended, but like, what's happening? What are we doing wrong? We do so much good in this community. So we asked the question for the last few years, we've asked that question. Why? Why? Why don't you like me? Uh, next slide. So the good news is uh we got sixty-three comments and forty-five of the sixty-three had nothing to do with us. And it was very evident that even though they think they know who we are, they don't know who we are. The overwhelming majority were your water tastes gross or it's too hard or your bill for too high. And and I'm like, well, clearly that's not us. There's no question. Uh, the remaining comments and questions may be about us. There were a couple that was like obviously about us, but most of them, I was like, well, it's hard to say. It could be about us, could not be about us, could be about somebody else entirely. Um, there were comments about fiscal responsibility. There were a couple of comments saying that we make a lot of money and we need to invest it back in the community. And I'm like, well, yeah, we do. You know, so clearly that's somebody who doesn't really know the depth of our investments. Um, there was one very big comment about a lack of communication, which I was like, are you kidding me? And um so there were a lot of those sorts of things that that didn't quite hit the mark. They could be about us and they could be about someone else entirely. But but that just shows us that there's still more work to do in really getting people to understand who we are. Next slide. So the key takeaways were simply that it really is getting better. We are getting better awareness, better, uh, you know, deeper understanding of who we are, why do we matter to this community, but we do still have a lot of work to do. There are a lot of folks who still don't know who we are at all and and people who think they know who we are but are clearly wrong. And so we we do need to continue our our very active approaches at trying to communicate and reach the community with our campaigns, our community engagement and special events like we had last week at the Fledgers Town Hall. Things like that really help make a difference in reaching people and helping them understand at a much deeper level who we are, who we do. And I think that's all of that. Yeah. Any questions?
Chair. Did you share that info with the Marysville or the town water and the water to make sure they know that they have some stuff that's going to mess look, Ben?
I haven't, but I I can get some sleep here. I think they would.
I just want to say thanks for uh going to the looking at what the public perceives us as and uh I think it's important that they they know that Yuba Water exists and all. So we've got some areas to target in the future and thanks for doing that.
Well, you have have a banner to Yuba Water Agents. There'd be some way on the banner that rather just say Yuba Water Agents, say something uh flood control and water development.
We do have. Yeah, we do have a quite a few different banners, and depending on the event, we'll put a different banner out there. So there's some that focus specifically on flood risk and water supply, and there are some that focus on water education and some that focus on forest restoration. So depending on who the audience is at these different events, we tend to put different banners up. But we do, we try to use those banners to educate a little bit more and um and offer just a deeper dive, just a smidge into into what we are actually on about.
That's what I'm saying. Yuba Water Agents doesn't really say much about it, but what we do, what counts.
Exactly.
Any comments? Just just also to you, maybe we could get a actively updated total of how much money to Yuba or some of this. Like bubble size, like a regular update to that. I'm sure you probably already do somewhere.
We are actually, it's it's good you say that. We were looking on um uh coordinated with Curtis to try and come up with something we can have on our website that really shows the grant money that we've invested and like the where it's proportioned so that people can see like how much we're investing in flood risk and water supply and some of these other areas. Um, but it's just been a, they're they're going through a financial processing software change, and so it'll be a little bit longer, but but that is on our bucket list. So fingers crossed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think the poster boards at the deal the other night were really eye open, just um. And I thought it was a good turnout, but it was, you know, I just felt proficient and thousands of people that are not just using this.
We were so happy. There were like seventy people and it wasn't nobody.
Maybe if we have a smaller event where we not get have a big sign, do we have any just to reply everywhere?
Happy they had a privilege on.
I have a question. Um, because of the way we were, I think of it, daddy, is this and this. So did you remember souls uh kill folks by life? Do you know what the people that responded or dedicated?
I I don't really remember Katie asking that question. Um, I will, I can double check and see. I don't think we did ask Rickna of Zipco that that would be a really good professional. I'll check those results.
Turn a man turn a fuss on and the water comes out.
When you um complete that information about the grants, and I know you've released that several times, but that might be a really good one to really pay money to promote it on social media to really help get that for an app.
Yeah, that's brilliant.
Plan?
I I just comment, it's great that you can measure uh your accomplishments and and see it in black and white. That's that's I didn't know that that could be done in that way. And that's good. That's good to see that your work is mattering.
Okay.
One little one little data point uh connecting to what Katie said. Last time of there were, there were a couple of festivals in uh in foothills in Brown Hill and Organ House. And you just, you guys have put the the big, the big building up. And you don't really know how many questions we have to answer about our new big building. So it would have been great if you guys were, would it, would it be there too? I think it's, I think toward the, or the time. Because, you know, you you had to talk about you and um and 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 it's also um really clear to foothill interest. Um, once you have that nice presentation on it. What had you, what do you guys uh mean for the local fire district? What do you guys mean for the local, for the for the upper water state like that? What do you mean for population? Um, so that people can um can see, oh. Because part, part of our quality of life is is related to to exactly how green are these pastures? How burnt up are we? How how much forest is being cut and who's doing it? You know, water, some.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Not on Zoom, I imagine. Managers report.
Yeah, so um the agency's doing well. You heard from Carl and Casey. Thanks, Casey. Thank you. Yeah, that's right. Back to work. That's right. Um, yeah, that's the big thing we're focusing around on right now, but um, you know, we continue to move water downhill. Um, New Buller's Bar is currently at eighteen hundred and almost seventy uh feet in elevation with a storage of six hundred and six thousand eight feet. We have got a little bit of inflow from the storm, another storm tomorrow. Uh, it's like a one day storm, maybe inch or more rain up there. Uh, you'll see the uh power generation revenue summary through September. Uh, I'll just generally say that the the overall megawatt hours is slightly above our forecast, but the dollars per megawatt hours is slightly below. You'll see um our bilateral projects like resource adequacy and others um are are look really good still this year because those contracts were um struck a couple of years ago. So we're still benefiting from the high prices of those bilateral project products. But um as we talked uh in the past few meetings, those prices seem to be flattening and coming down, the demand of those project products are decreasing. Uh, but overall, the agency's uh power sales revenue is looking good. Um, you know, we continue to finalize all the different systems at the new uh building up at Organ House, and um hopefully that'll be done close to the end of the year. Um, there's a a project going on at Lake Francis Dam to um install additional um instrumentation to measure things going on with that dam. Um, some of that work happened in the last few weeks and some of it is uh phased, so it'll happen next summer, and I think Eshman Construction is the one working on that. Um, Hanson Brothers out of Grass Valley is currently doing some concrete repair in the spillway chute at New Buller's Bar that started last week, and it'll um continue on for a little while. Uh, the recreation side of things, um they, you know, basically buttoned up the recreation, our part of the recreation at Buller's for the winter. Um, and that crew's also working on um tank replacement at our water treatment plant and other maintenance at the water treatment plant. Uh, you kind of saw what the mechanical crew's doing, working on the valves um inside Foggy Powerhouse right now. Uh, both the Narrows units are online and they're uh delivering the water in the Lower Yuba River for both minimum and stream flows and uh for fall flood up for the rice fields. And on the communications side of things, uh the Appeal Democrat, K C R A, ninety-three Q Radio, K U B A and Country one oh three all helped promote our flood risk and town hall event last week. And I just want to take a moment to thank the entire team that put that together. And I know there were some comments about it here a minute ago, but I think it was super successful. I mean, yeah, we had seventy people in attendance, but um you never know when you put out the invites and, you know, you post it on social media and you advertise it. You know if you're gonna have ten people or a hundred and fifty, and I think having seventy was great. And I think all those folks were really engaged and it was, you know, good to see that in our local community. And I think the the panel discussion, the poster presentations, uh they were all very educational and, you know, hopefully maybe your numbers in the next survey will uh, you know, reflect the the in-person style of communication we engaged in last week. Um, the entire event aired live on ninety-three Q and Yuba Center Live. CBS thirteen of Sacramento did live shots for their evening shows from inside the event and then aired recorded stories to the rest of that night's newscast and into the following morning. Uh, the Appeal Democrat also ran a recap of some of the Q and A from the event as a follow-up story. And in the end, we had seventy uh members of the public attend and a great level of engagement and audience questions. I thought that was really good. Um, we got a nice shout out in the Chico TV market for their coverage of the second year of the salmon reintroduction initiative and effort that we're partnering on with the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And there's a a fun, unique little story where a fifteen year old um up there down he go caught one of the uh full sized salmon that I think we uh C F W put forty um adult salmon in the upper North Yuba, and this kid caught one of them. It was a, it was an article on one of the uh the fisherman website, but um it's pretty fun. I mean, we want those salmon to uh, you know, have babies and and spawn and, you know, replenish the North Yuba, but for one, I'm glad it was a kid. Probably was very surprised when he got, you know, thirty inch, you know, seven pound fish, whatever it was. Uh, a few of us were recently interviewed by a crew for a show on CNBC called Now We Know with Steve Guttenberg. And he's most famous for his role in the Police Academy movies. The show will focus on holistic water management and it airs on Saturday mornings, and we believe our segment is going to air in November or December, and we'll keep you posted on when we know for sure. On October twenty-second, I spoke to the Water Education Foundation's Northern California tour during a lunch stop at our power systems facility at the Organ House. Uh, same day, Kayla Holmes represented us at a speech contest, as a speech contest judge for Marysville High's F F A program. And on October thirtieth, Trevor Riley and Bonnie Dixon represented us at the Cobalot Elementary School's Career Day. And our sponsorships approved since our last meeting include the Scariesville Halloween Event, the Habitat for Humanity Pine Street Project, and the Hands of Hope Turkey Trot taking place November twenty-second. And the Swan Festival, which was approved for sponsorship several months ago, is taking place this coming weekend. Our upcoming meetings are on November eighteenth. We'll have a a regular board meeting and also a special board meet meeting where we will go over our strategic plan. Right? That's all I got.
Billy, I have one question. Do we have a policy yet for public use of the new head room cards to mid doors?
We are working on it. It's not, it's not finalized.
Okay.
Are you getting requests?
I just want, just somebody asked and I said, I think we're, we're not completely done with the building and uh we're at a couple of policies.
Yes, and it it's being significant, the whole property is being significantly used by us and contractors right now during this tunnel outage. So I might say by early next calendar year, we have a policy and a other land for public.
All right. Good, Chair. Yeah. Uh, so on October fifteenth, P G N E issued a uh statement saying that they had dropped residential power users rates by two point one percent. They're expected to drop another two to four percent next year. Is that, is that being factored into our forecast that, you know, they're expecting to pay less for energy? I'm sure they're not taking a loss on the profit, right?
Well, I think they're they're probably not taking a loss on the property right there. I think some of the um, let's just call it mitigation work they've had to do from wildfires on their transmission and distribution systems is is completed and and going down. It's likely not through their uh generation uh procurement portfolio. It's mostly on the transmission and distribution side where they're seeing uh less cost. I would imagine that's where that's coming from. Yeah, I didn't cover in detail.
Okay, just wanted to, I just want to say thank you guys again for putting together the the event last week for uh for all the folks to come and learn about what Yuba Water is investing in their emergency response and the people standing behind all the flood uh the flood response. So I mean, a lot of, a lot of the the people that I represent don't don't have a ton of confidence because they've been flooded before, especially off West Linda. And uh it, they didn't really come out to that event, but they get to see it on social media and they get to hear about it. They're they're friends and they're representatives and everybody where there's, it's pretty good. And then also wanted to thank you guys for getting uh both those sponsorships for Scariesville and the Habitat for Humanity Pine Street Project onto the books. So uh they serve, the Scariesville served over fifteen hundred kids. They bought thirty five hundred pounds of candy, so pretty sure the kids love. They bought 3500 pounds of candy, so pretty sure the kids left a lot of candy. And then the Pine Street Project, they, they completed the, the rural rally, which was a week-long rehabilitation of that exterior of that neighborhood. And then they started working on hanging sheet rock and putting in new electrical in the house that's gonna get awarded to a veteran in our community pretty soon here. So it's, it's super important to thank you for getting that for sure.
Were those your direct comments?
That's everything.
Skip over Andy then. Now that's. Charlie?
I just, the tunnel outage, such a major event, and just want to compliment the whole staff that it does such a thorough job of planning, making sure it's right.
And, and not only thorough job of planning, making sure that it's right, but when something doesn't fly, go right, jump in there, solve that problem, and take, get it back on course.
And I'll just report, you know, the delay we had with the low-level outlet was, was definitely an unanticipated, you know, speed bump in the project. But the low-level outlet has been functioning great since, you know, we figured out the streamliner was the issue. So everything's going great with flows into the Lower Yuba River.
Clay?
Just, today's just one of many days this has happened for me, but all the reports from today just make me proud to be on this team. So thank you to all who make things happen in the county and things that I can feel good about for my little small.
Gary?
So back on the 22nd, I had an opportunity to go with Bear River School from Leland on the salmon expedition. So it was great. And so thank you to Circle and to fellow board members and to staff for continuing to support that every year. I do encourage board members, if you get a chance, pick a school each year and go with them. I know many of us do that. So that's been great. Last Tuesday, at the Leland City Council meeting, they had a presentation on the South County Infrastructure Project, and I attended that. I know Terry was there and some of our consultants as well, and I think they went very well. There were a couple, couple public comments or questions, but they were overall very positive. And council members were very appreciative of our support. Flanders Town Hall was outstanding, so thank you to everyone who was involved in that. 70 is a great number of people that were there. I do wish we had thousands, as, as the chair said. But, you know, take, take what we can get. I was really happy to see that there were a lot of kind of regular community members there. So obviously, we had a lot of partners that were there. There were definitely leaders from the community that you see at events like that, but there were also folks that you generally don't see out at events that were just regular old community members. And so that was excellent. And then finally, I was able to attend the opening and closing ceremonies for the rural rally, and so on Pine Street. So appreciate the agency's support of that.
That's it. Great. I once again did not make a salmon expedition because my water harvest just tied me up too much, so next year for sure.
You're gonna change water harvest or, or win a salmon.
The only thing I wanted to add about the, the event at the 530 Rally. Excellent event, and I have an idea to draw more people for the poll at next time. Just advertise out there that Banji's doing the food. She did it out of the park with the food. And that food chimed in for all those people. So anyhow, can't say enough of, I don't know how she does it, but I'm sure she had a lot of help from a bunch of people on the staff. It was awesome. And that's all I have. So with that, I'm gonna, we're gonna take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back in here at 10:23 for a close set.
Recording stopped.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. Yubasutter.live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's Monday to Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays right here on yubasutter.live. Subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we've posted something new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on yubasutter.live. Today on yubasutter.live, Government Watch. Sutter County Supervisors this afternoon at 3:00. Marysville Unified.